This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. This is a joint meeting of the Planning and Development Subcommittee, Town Council Meeting, Monday, March 22, 2021, 6:00 PM. Remote participation only. Chairman's announcement. So into Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, spending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, Chapter 30 Alpha, subsection 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Planning and Development Subcommittee is being conducted as remote participation, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting on progress may do so by watching by the remote information noted below. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website. As soon as we are able to, roll call vote is required for all votes taken under this order. Item number one, roll call. Counselor Adams, present. DeeDee?
Present.
Counselor Dow?
Present.
Catherine?
Present.
Counselor Lazo? Absent. Item number two, consider accept Plan Development meeting minutes of March 1, 2021. Of course, I did not get those completed before this meeting, so they will be at the next Plan Development Subcommittee meeting that we do have, so we'll have to approve two of them tonight's and the first. Item number three, discuss review of the Goods and Services Agreement, the BSC Group, to provide urban planning consulting services for $45,000 funded using the Urban Agenda Grant Award. entertain a motion to vote to recommend that the council ratify the agreement. Okay? Need a second?
I'll do the second.
That was quick. He's on his toes. All right.
Too fast.
Mr. Town Manager, would you like to start off or just pass it over to Ms. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would defer to Ms. Dean. We have talked collectively. I hear a bad air. Nevertheless, nevertheless, we've been working together with various members of the staff, Ms. Dean and Mr. Rumsey, so at this point, I would hand over to Ms. Dean to explain.
Yes, sir. Ms. Dean?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so forgive the handouts redundancy. I can see from including the memo in the scope of work that it shows up multiple times. If we could just walk through quickly, I hope most of the information was relatively straightforward in the documents. You see the initial memo to the PND and to Town Council explaining the background. So again, we're going for both the LRRP and the Urban Agenda. And as you see in the background in the memo, the Department of Housing and Community Development, they partnered us with BSC Group, who wrote our urban renewal plan back in 2004, 2005. It ended up being adopted in 2007. And it's a great match for the town. That's technical assistance, no funds change hands. And what Department of Housing and Community Development, talking to the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, as the overseer of the Urban Agenda suggested, was that we tried to hire BSC Group as our consultant for both to get the most mileage out of their services. We looked into, through the Office of the Inspector General, whether or not we could go ahead and pursue their services. And we can, in fact. And so, under the procurement laws, if there's a qualification such as a certification or a license, oftentimes that will be what causes an exemption. So there are certain exemptions for things like architecture, design. And so, in this case, for the urban planning, the scope has been, you know, appropriate for us to be able to pursue a quote from someone if we see it fit. And so, this worked out really well. You know, playing it a couple of different ways, for instance, had we gone out for quotes and someone, just what came in very low, that wasn't the perfect match for us, we would have no other choice but to accept their services. And so, working with the town manager, again, with the Office of the Inspector General, we went ahead, got a request for quotes from BSC. Once we found out we were partnered with them, they did accept the quote for an all-in fee of the $45,000. Within the budget, there's also another $5,000 for materials, which should they want to access those funds, we could potentially charge some of the planning materials to that within the grant. And they would start, when I wrote the scope, it was at a time when there would be four months. And so, I should have said three months ultimately, because I ended up drafting the scope of services for 30, 60, 90-day scope of services. So forgive the confusion. But it is from now until the end of June, and the scope is very specific. And they look forward to working with us, should you want to go ahead and accept their services.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dean. Any questions? Okay. Counselor Marcati first, and then Counselor Cottura.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I met the gentleman, the guy, the other night, the same guy that was at the Redevelopment Authority. And I probably should have asked this, because I was thinking about it afterwards. What exactly is he going to bring to the table? I know it's what it's written here, but I'm just kind of like wondering exactly what it is that he's going to do. I'm not opposed to it, I'm just wondering, what would he bring?
If you look through the scope, it kind of talks to, excuse the laughter in the background. If you walk through the scope, what we're looking for is someone who can really take what was our urban renewal plan and make sense of it for us today, where we are from then until now. What from it can we potentially pursue immediately? And if not immediately, those medium, you know, so there was the immediate, the medium, and the long-term action items to follow through from the urban renewal plan. What we were trying to determine over the last year was, do we need to do a minor amendment to the urban renewal plan, which would cost somewhere between probably $40,000 and $80,000? Or do we need to do a full-on rewrite, which would cost somewhere around $140,000? And so, there was never any determination about what the best next steps were. I feel like this is the smartest approach for us to be able to finally have an expert come in and say, these are your options, and this is where you stand, this is what you really should consider. And so, rather than having had some new consultant come in who wasn't expert in this material already, you have the person to be able to bring us to today. So what will be produced will be the three trainings for all of us. So what our biggest goal was for this specific agenda was to teach the Redevelopment Authority what their powers are. You know, we can read the legislation, we can read the guidance from DHCD, but it's hard for us to have the confidence to just go forward with what are very sophisticated tools. And so, this expert can come in and help us figure that out. Help us figure out how to set up the financial mechanism to be able to accept seed money and do things with that money. And then be able to build on the public participation process to figure out what everyone's consensus is about future goals, and immediate and future goals. And so, those are, that's a big planning lift. And it's a huge, it's a huge lift in three months. So it's no small feat, but we came in with high expectations, we're going to hold them to it, and I believe that they can do it. If you look at their profile, their background, they have gone into Everett. And forgive me for not having the towns on the tip of my fingers, but they have gone in and done urban renewal plans for other towns, more so than any other design firm I've seen out there. And so, I was hoping we would get them. I consider us very lucky.
Now, what type of example could you give me of an urban change or urban renewal that they have performed that helped the town?
In our town or in another town?
Or any town, yeah.
So, once you create this urban, so as we'll learn, when they'll educate us, you know, the point is to be able to either cobble together a couple parcels that you see as potentially developable, and then positioning the town for finding a developer for that property, using the Redevelopment Authority to help you hire them without having to go through procurement. So you can find the developer, or you can pursue the types of businesses that you want, that you've outlined within the urban renewal plan, without having to open yourselves up to an auction or a public process for procurement. So that's one of the biggest tools. And once it's prescribed within the urban renewal plan, the Department of Housing and Community Development approves it. That's what gives it its teeth. So once they approve it, then you've got the opportunity to be able to pursue different things. What those things are is up to us to be able to figure out. Now, we had one done, and within it's a set of infrastructure recommendations. It's a set of, you know, things to lure private investors, open space recommendations. You know, so there's varying degrees of strategy, right? So they come in with a couple of different strategies, they cobble them together, they say, you know, with these different steps, you can potentially move your town in whatever that direction is that you decided was your direction. And so, we went through a large participation process back in the day to figure out what that direction was. Now, we need to figure out, okay, you know, where did we go from there to here, and what's next? Because what I heard multiple times was, ah, I don't know if the urban renewal plan is, you know, is where our decisions are. Well, the doctrines of a planning department are supposed to be your planning documents, right? So we invest all this money in these planning documents, we should be able to pick them up and say, okay, this is what's next. This is what's next. And that is our marching orders, rather than having to rethink it, like, we're coming into town, we're smarter, we know what's best. The public participation process is supposed to be what determined all that. And then we just pick it up and we make it move. And so, we don't really, I don't feel that we know exactly where to pick up the urban renewal plan. So the goal is to be able to find out, can we pick up some things? And if we can't, what do they recommend about us going forward?
All right, thank you. That was a good answer. I'm looking forward to hearing more from this guy. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And hopefully, you sound like you'll be involved in the LRRP, which, you know, hopefully will dovetail with all of this, and you'll be very much involved, which is great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Marcati. Counselor Cottura, and then I believe, then Counselor Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. To the town manager, do we? When I look over the quote from the planning consultant for Southbridge Urban Agenda, I see that there's, we're paying them $45,000 with no reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses, such as incidental costs related to doing business, so on and so forth. However, there's an asterisk below that with advanced approval from CDBG, as Peg mentioned. The consultants may propose, the town of Southbridge requests an additional $5,000 for expenses. So I guess my question is, who's overseeing the receipts? Who's going to be overseeing this? Because I see, under the grant budget form, that there's $45,000 in the consultant fees, and then $5,000 on the program materials, and then $20,000 on the meeting expenses. So when you say we're going to pay them, from what I read here, once, twice, three times, the final payment, who's going to be overseeing this? If there's additional money left over at the end, where does it go?
Ms. Dean?
Sure. So the way I wrote the grant was that the consultant will only get that $45,000. I was afraid that if we talked to the cost for materials within the consultant's fee, we wouldn't have any control, or wouldn't be able to oversee what those expenses were. And so, with the caveat that we have $5,000 for materials towards these planning meetings, understanding that, you know, sometimes the handouts, or the, you know, if in the ideal situation, we're getting together in person, the costs for in-person, all those materials could fall under that budget line. And so then, it would be overseen by me. It's clearly stated that they have to submit the, they have to submit the request for an expense to me. And then, if I approve it, they're going to have that vendor bill directly to us, and we're submitting those invoices. So that gives me a high level of control over the spending. And my other concern is, you know, if you just had $5,000 on top of the consultant, it just falls into their overhead expenses, and we don't ever really see what the, you know, what those necessary expenses were. So the $5,000 for materials for the planning meetings and any related expenses, it could potentially be for ancillary things like surveys and signage, and, you know, things like that that we need. The $20,000 is more for the actual performances and the culturally inclusive programming that we're going to be producing at the Central Street parking lot. And the extra, the additional funds that remain, they say if there are additional funds, you can request to use those funds as long as it's not a deviation of more than X amount per line. And so, I would assume if we have, you know, if it's determined as we're going along that we're going to have any extra funds, that would be a great opportunity to just hire more cultural programming, right? And that's another great way to put spending back into the community. If we're hiring performers, you know, we're being able to help people who weren't otherwise able to be out in the community in the last year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of minutes ago, you went, Peg, when you were talking about the kind of process, it made me think of what we had gone through with the master plan a couple of years ago. And I was wondering if you could kind of give us an idea of how do we avoid some of the issues that we saw there when we had master planning issues that we thought we had raised, and I was on the master planning committee, as was Larry Spinelli. And we had both noticed that there were some issues that never ended up in our final documents. Some planning issues. And I know you weren't here at the time, Peg, so that's part of the issue. So I'm assuming you've read the documents, but there were issues that you probably talked to Larry about, and he's probably torn your ear off about it, but.
No, I leave all those conversations to Eric.
Okay. But anyway, so we had some of those issues back then, and that some of the issues that we had raised did not end up in our master plan, and did not end up in our zoning documents. And then, the planning board has gone through, you know, the last couple of years, making some significant zoning changes to more accurately reflect what we had originally thought was supposed to be there. So I was hoping that you can give us some more details of how do we make sure we avoid doing that again? And, because that makes me, that makes me a little skeptical of using consultants. They talked a good talk then, and then we saw what happened. Any comments on that?
I guess I would say lessons learned. It's great that you're bringing this to my attention, so that I can watch extra closely what, you know, is stated versus documented, especially in light of the timeframe. You know, Michael has said, you know, in that short timeframe, there's a risk of mistakes, that I, you know, I have to make sure I'm extra careful about the details. Or, you know, we were talking to some effective, you know, something related to it. And so, that's just one more reinforcement that, you know, I need to be watching closely how these public participation processes go. I think one saving grace right now, actually, is that we're recording everything. And so, it's being documented very transparently. I think that that's on our side. But I'll do my best to try to make sure that, you know, those situations don't happen.
Okay, well, thank you. I know you weren't there at the time, so it's certainly not your responsibility. Also, I was wondering about this, earlier you had mentioned a lot of the issues that you seem to be aware of the fact that the Redevelopment Authority has these various powers that it can use. And I was curious about how much of it you could teach them to do on your own, as opposed to us having to hire a consultant to teach them to do these things? Since you seem to already know what they need to do.
So, you know, I studied up a lot when I first came on. But I have to say that, you know, that was Rosemary's role, was the Redevelopment Authority. And I didn't, you know, there were recommendations I'd made along the way while I was under her that weren't seen through on. So I wondered, you know, that obviously makes me question, maybe I'm not looking in the right direction. Maybe my, you know, maybe I'm misunderstanding the legislation. And so, you know, rather than now just going off on my own, as soon as she left, I thought the first thing we needed was concrete education, and not, you know, my just trying to come in there and attempt.
Okay, well, that's a good answer. And also, how old is our current redevelopment plan?
I just, you know, I was saying, 2007. There's a couple of different dates. You did your public participation 2004, 2005. I think it was adopted 2006.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, Ms. Dean. Question for you. You're doing a great job, you're working hard, you put all the time and effort in the work you do, and you represent a lot of things for us lately, a lot of grants, a lot of work. And it seems everybody asks you questions, you're accountable answer. So we kind of feel more comfortable working and actually getting things done by you, and we improve it, no problem. Specific on this, who's gonna, like, I know you're going to manage and wash those. That person is going to be hired. If he failed to do what he's committed, did we're going to pay him? Are we going to keep the money? Is there any punishment for him for not doing what he promised, or going forward? Was the work he promised is going to do? Who's going to review all this? Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
So thank you for your words. Get me a little teary-eyed. I'm very flattered. The reason we wrote the payment schedule the way we did, the 30, 60, 90, with deliverables and milestones, is for that exact reason. So we will hold back payment unless we have proof of these things. I have no relationship with these consultants. I have no reason to do anything but serve the town of Southbridge and make sure that we get what we're supposed to. Obviously, we don't want to turn back money, but we also don't want to just surrender cash to pad the pockets of designers, engineers, right? And so, it would be better off put back into the state's coffers to be redistributed than it would be to be given to that planner. However, they want to see it spent by the end of June, so I'm sure if something was going awry, I could call the state and say, please, you know, give a phone call, you know, try and help me get these people to work harder for us. Having said that, my conversations with this consultant have assured me that they do want to work hard for us. They, you know, they are saying that they're looking forward to being able to see through what their initial efforts were. He felt like we passed over a couple of opportunities we had in that urban renewal plan. And so, he would like to see, for instance, the rail trail is an obvious one. You know, he sees us being able to go forward with some things, and will help us hopefully position ourselves a lot better.
Okay. So you say that have experience already in Everett, Riviera, somewhere Everett?
Yes, I think Everett was the one that really stood out in my mind as the most recent, when I was looking at his references.
Did we have any, any way we can call Everett and check on them if there's any issue, or?
Yes, that's a great idea. Yep. Why don't I, following up from this phone call, get you some references by tomorrow? If you'd like to follow up in advance of the town council meeting?
Yeah, sure, please. Thank you.
Sure. And also, just to reinforce, he was recommended, time and again, by multiple agencies at the state level. So this, I know that the state likes them a lot. I'm hoping the municipalities really like him too.
I hope he does. That job for Southbridge, we want to like him. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Catherine, did you have a question?
No.
DeeDee? I think, Counselor Daniel? Okay. My question to you is, you're receiving all this education. The staff is as well. Obviously, this is to better the Redevelopment Authority as well. I did notice the other day, we had a Redevelopment Authority meeting. And there was only a couple that, one was on time, the other one was a little late. I guess my question at this point in time is, are they going to have more than a monthly meeting? Or are you going to persuade them on the off-duty hours to have more than one meeting a month so they can receive the same education you're receiving, in a sense?
So, yeah, in advance of accepting, or in advance of, yeah, accepting the request for quotes from BSC, I don't even think I'd sent it out yet. I got the commitment from the Redevelopment Authority that they're willing to meet every Thursday from April 1st through June 30th, just to be able to take advantage to the extent that they want to or need to. They're in full support, they look forward to this, and they admit that, you know, they may not always have, you know, all four of them there. But they are, they're willing to do their best.
Very well. No, thank you so much, Ms. Dean. I know DeeDee and Counselor Marcati and myself were both on the, all three of us were on the Redevelopment Authority with very little guidance besides a parking lot that finally got done a few, this past year. I guess I'll caveat from this is that a lot of the town councils have brought up the same questions that I would have brought up as well, and we look forward to, at least, I don't want to speak for them, but I know, I do know, we push this a lot, and I appreciate yourself diving into this matter, along with the town manager giving his support behind it as well. So thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, let's do a vote. All those in favor? DeeDee?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Adams? Yes. 4-0. That's the recommendation. Item number four, discuss class review of the non-binding community agreement, the BSC Group, or local rapid recovery program, or LRRP, technical assistance. entertain a motion to vote that council ratified this agreement. Need a first and a second, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right. Let's see here. Mr. Town Manager or Ms. Dean? I'll just leave it at that.
I would defer to Ms. Dean again, most familiar with it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dean?
I don't know how you want to handle this as a body, but Counselor Adams, you brought up today that there was a timeline of four months in my urban agenda, which made me look back to all the timelines. So in the urban agenda, it's a three-month. During the LRRP kickoff, he mentioned it was six months. I looked back at the non-binding agreement, and it said six weeks. I was alarmed. I called him and said, we're preparing for this meeting. He sent me a revised agreement, so I don't know if you want to make an amendment to accept the agreement with the revised timetable. If you wanted to make me a presenter, I can show you what he just sent. So it would, okay.
Let's go ahead and do a, we'll do an amendment to that. We can make a friendly amendment. I think it's Catherine that you'd have to do. No, I'm sorry, DeeDee. A friendly amendment. Nobody opposed to that at all?
No, I'm in favor. Make the amendment.
But bear, we have, bear with me real quick, I haven't done this very often, so presenter, is it under?
You'll choose me as, you know, look under the participants, and then, under the drop-down arrow, yeah, make presenter.
Got it. There you go.
Okay, so you can see right here, this timeline has been revised. So phase one, six to eight weeks. Phase two, six to eight weeks after phase one. Phase three, now six to eight weeks after phase two. And so, now that adds up to, right, this 18 weeks up to 24 weeks of service. So he had said during his call, it was supposed to be a six-months service, so that makes more sense. I will send this, I think, Dave, I already sent it to you, and I sent it to Yvonne. And I'll ask that that be included in the town council's agenda packets.
Yeah, that's not a problem. We don't need to amend this, what we just wrote up, read off, at all, because it doesn't talk about timeframe.
You don't talk about which agreement it is that you're actually approving?
All right. I'm not thinking right now, so can you explain that to me one more time, please?
All right, let me look at the motion and make sure that. Look at the table of contents. Look at the table of contents. So the agenda states. The non-binding community agreement with BSC. Okay, so yeah, I guess if you want to just accept the motion as is, but the, but the actual agreement is the one that I've just shown you.
That's fine. That's the agreement that'll be attached to our town council packets on Monday. Right, okay. Well, we did a friendly amendment to it, but there really is no amendment to this at all. So I'm just gonna stick and somebody can, let me know if I'm wrong, but we'll just stick to the original amendment that we already had that DeeDee motioned on, Catherine seconded on. Anybody have any concerns on that one at all? Counselors, or anybody? Town manager? All right, okay. All right, so.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Yes, sir. Counselor Marquette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So this is the same, the same group is getting this grant as the previous grant, correct? Same guy. And this grant here, I believe, is worth, is $60,000. So between the two grants, this is $112,000 for three months of work. So it's not really a question. I'm just saying that this better be very, very good service for $112,000 for three months' work. It should be top of the line, A number one. All right, thank you.
I just want to clarify, and I'm sure Counselor Marquette already knows this, this one, no, no money exchanges hands, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
It is $60,000.
But the, the 45, yeah, in the end, yes, through taxpayer funds. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Dean.
And just to reemphasize, that timeline is six months for at least the LRRP. So we get a little longer out of them.
All right, thank you.
But it's still $60,000. Right.
Just for this one. The other one's 72. This one's 60. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Steve, do you have a question?
Um, yeah, I was just curious through you to peg how, how these, how BSC was chosen for these, by this process? Is this, did we go out to bid? Did the state bid them? Was it a bid, was it a state list thing? How, how did they end up on the radar?
The state, the state went into contracts with consultants throughout the state. They partnered with some planning agencies, some design firms. It depended on this, the, this, the request that they got from the applicants. They had a pool of potential contracts they were going to lock into, and then they went ahead and did so. Our specific request from the town was, we did not want to be matched with CMRPC. They assured us we wouldn't. So I don't know what kind of planning was happening in the background, that they already had an indication, you know, of where we could go. But again, DHCD, who approves our urban renewal plan, no coincidence, was the one that then matched us with BSC as our original urban renewal plan planner.
And did we have any other options besides BSC?
No.
No.
We weren't, we were told, yeah.
Oh, okay. But we're not paying the bill anyway, the state is paying, correct? Okay, okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, it is the, the state who picked this individual or this group and then, so we had no real say in this whatsoever, not this part. All right, any other discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, Catherine?
Yes.
DeeDee?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Adams, yes. 4-0 recommendation. Number five, discuss review of the bid packet for the shared streets funded construction of the rectangle rapid flashing beacons. I'm not going to go into anything further, because I have, I think I have a question for either Ms. Dean or the town manager on this one. So we won't, I don't need a first and a second on this one. Before I, no, 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 no need to motion right now. We'll do that at the end. Because just the question I may have for Ms. Dean or the town managers is I know that, opening the bid on April 2nd. So we don't know what the bids are going to be like. But our next town council meetings on the 5th, I was wondering if Mr. Town Manager or Peg, you've gotten with Jack to find out if we could just take this to the town council after reviewing it tonight? Or should we make a motion on it? Because he's not aware of it.
I want to say the reason that, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Dean, but this was an interest of time because of the way we had to get these out to bid because of the funds and the timing. I want to say that I have broached the subject with Chairman Jovan and I, but I do think one of the reasons that it's here before this evening is so that you're aware of what's going on in the plan moving forward in the event that we can go right to council.
Okay, we can also recommend, have somebody recommend it, second it, discuss it afterwards. Just so the town council will have our recommendations after we kind of took a look at it as well. I don't have a problem with accepting a motion at all on this. Whatever you guys feel is the best we can do. Counselor Marquette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This, this actual, this agenda doesn't really make much sense to me. It's not VHB's bid. So I don't know why VHB is even in this agenda. And since the bids aren't even being open until April 2nd, I don't, I don't think we should authorize anything. We shouldn't make any recommendations for the town manager. It's review and discuss the bid packet for the shared streets funded construction project regarding the rectangular rapid flashing beacon grant. I don't think there's, there's no recommendation for the town manager. So I'm not quite sure. And like I said, I'm not sure why VHB is even mentioned here.
Okay, you know what we can do is we can, we can discuss this and then if we feel comfortable with making a motion at the very end, that's fine. If a motion is made, or we just let it go right to the town council. All right, I'm gonna pass it over to the town manager and Ms. Dean first to kind of discuss this whole thing. Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
So as Michael mentioned, I wasn't sure how to handle this because of the timelines. We have VHB doing the engineering and they have the, they are assisting with the bid process. So that's why they're, that's the only reason they're referenced in the agenda, Counselor Marquette. Is that what will happen is we'll get the bids on Friday, the 2nd. We'll, they'll vet them, they'll tabulate them and they'll make their recommendation based on the, the bids that were submitted. And then we'll get all of those over to you as quickly as possible. So, so I don't, I didn't know how we should handle it. But the, you don't have a town council meeting again until the 26th, and that money has to be spent by the end of May. So it was, to me, it was really time sensitive to try to get it into that meeting on the 5th. And so bringing it to Counselor Adams and the town manager, we thought, let's bring it here to discuss.
Yeah, Counselor Catrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to, to, to the town manager or Peg. Why is the timeframe so short? And before, now we can't bring this until, if we bring it to 26th, I, I respect that the money has to be spent prior to, but why is there such a short timeframe?
These are the COVID-related shared streets funds that we went for. We got $230,000. We applied in December, were awarded in February. We have to spend it by the end of June. We immediately hired an engineer. The engineer is now prepared, has prepared the bid for us to be able to go out for construction. And so then the construction has to be completed by the end of May, or the funds have to be spent by the end of May, according to the contract. And I know I'm putting us up against tight timelines, but I felt like these funds were an opportunity for the town to be able to take advantage of what otherwise would not be funds. If we waited, so the shared streets was a, a grant that started last year. We never applied within any of the initial four rounds. And then when these new rounds of funds came, I thought, let's get on these as quick as possible. My selfish motives were that I was related to the Central Street parking lot. I saw, I saw there was opportunity to spend funds there. I then worked with Heather to try to apply for funds elsewhere in the town to try and take advantage of as much of the funds as possible. And so they actually have a few rounds. There was one right before us, but we couldn't quite get our application in time again because timelines were tight. So we got into the second round. There were two, I think there's two more rounds after that. I can't imagine applying for funds after this and trying to spend down those funds in time. And so I did the best we could to try to get the, the funds as quickly as possible. And I think I've mentioned in the past, similar to complete streets, these funds, we are allowed to do the engineering where in other complete streets projects, you can't fund the engineering with the, with those, with that money. So we're just trying to move as quick as possible, take advantage of the money that's out there, you know, try to offset whatever money the town funds wouldn't otherwise pay for. Get these projects. If we waited for complete streets, we wouldn't see these projects for maybe another year.
Thank you. Great explanation, Peg. Thank you.
I just want to note to Counselor Catrona, we skipped out on the first round of the shared streets, which was a, probably something we shouldn't have in the first place.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any discussion? Do you want to discuss this for a little bit? The, the actual construction paper, the, the bid process at all, Peg, or do you think you're, would you like to discuss this any further? Does anybody have any questions for Peg? Yeah. Nobody has any questions? Okay.
I actually, and I want to apologize for inundating you with the packet. I wasn't sure what to provide. I know that sometimes, you know, you all have a good eye for some of these things. And so I thought you might be interested in the packet. And so, and, and that was all we had in advance for the discussion was, you know, just what we put out to bid.
So I'll, I'll let somebody else ask.
Yeah, okay, thank you. DeeDee?
I just want to say.
Counselor Daniel?
Okay, I just want to say that I appreciate the fact that on page two of tiny note, this release, I'm not sure what it is, the bid form. It states there, as liquidated damages of $1,500 per day for each calendar day beyond the contract time. I think that's pretty good. I appreciate that. I think it helps to get it on a timely manner.
All right, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. If the bids aren't coming in until the 2nd and the meeting is on the 5th, how much time is VHB going to need to vet the bids?
Speaking with Greg Russell, last, you know, before getting this agenda to Yvonne, he assured me that if he had that afternoon to get the numbers together, he could give us his recommendation. And again, there, you know, it's most importantly, it's tabulating to make sure that what the total sum equals the quantity and the unit price. And so it's not necessarily the references. It's, it's those bid tabulations to make sure it's accurate. The, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder with the, you know, accurate number that's been verified by the engineer. And then these are all mastop pre-qualified for highway or highway, highway construction or highway signs. So they will be qualified coming in the door.
Okay, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, to the town manager. If this is being done on the 2nd and the meeting is the 5th, are we going to be able to get this on the agenda legitimately?
Well, we've had other instances, if, if I mean, Mr. Chairman, where we've placed things on the agenda. What we would likely do is assuming that we have a responsive bidder that is approved, that we would send out that information electronically or in print, how everybody needs it that afternoon. We could put a placeholder on the agenda from the day before. I don't see that being a posting requirement. It's just that normally people would want to have the materials in their pack in advance. I think that's going to be the gap that you have, is that we'll put the agenda item on, but you won't know until you get there Monday night. Well, you won't, we can get it to you Friday, but you won't have it on Thursday when it would normally be posted in the packet put together.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm all set.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Marquette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The only, only thing that I was trying to make the point of is that VHB is, it's not their bid. So I don't know why this is in there. It's not VHB's recommended bid. They, it's bids of these construction companies. But it's, since it's not being opened until the 2nd anyway, not quite sure why this needs to be voted on tonight. That was the only point I was trying to make. So, but that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think the reason VHB is there is because they helped us with the scope in that they are the ones helping to vet the bid and that's why I think it's in there. It may present a bit of confusion, but they're, they're the ones assisting with us. They're going to help vet the bid, make, help us make the recommendation.
We could also put in there, get rid of VHBs, because I think Counselor Marquette is right in that sense that they're helping with the recommendation. But ultimately, would it, and Mr. Town Manager, tell me, please let me know if I'm wrong. Instead of to accept recommended bid, we, or VHB's recommended bid, how about we to accept town manager's recommended bid? And, and just leave it as that. Now, obviously, we may have to amend that motion anyways with the, the amount down the road. Once we, once we find out how much the bid is. All right, all right. Counselor Steve?
I'm just for, for the sake of record, we, we can always amend that at the floor of council. That doesn't even be in the agenda item.
No, but I, I think he's, he's right. And I think, I think you're right. And we could just put the placeholder in there under the town council, because it could always be postponed or it could be taken off or whatever it may be. But at least it's there, for me, law, for me, law process. All right, is there anything else? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this off. I'll need a second and a mo, a second persons, sorry, motion is second. Entertain a motion to vote to recommend that council authorize the town manager, I'm sorry, authorize that the council accepts the town manager's recommended bid. Yeah, recommended bid packet for shared streets funded construction of the rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Anybody have anything different or anybody want to first that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, DeeDee? You have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. All right, all those in favor, Catherine?
Yes.
DeeDee?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Adams, yes. 4-0. I will send that motion to Ms. Dean and the town manager, probably this evening, if not first thing in the morning. All right, okay. Thank you. Number six, discuss review, submission of one stop for growth. Expression of interest outlining the town's five economic development priorities. Entertain a motion to vote to recommend that council authorize, council authorize the town manager to approve and sign all related paperwork. First and second?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. A second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Dean or Ms. Town Manager?
I'll defer to Ms. Dean.
Now, this was buried pretty deep in your packet. This was page 164 in the PDF, the last item. The town manager attended the MMA conference. At the MMA conference was a big announcement about how the state was trying to consolidate its grant programs into this new one stop for growth to try to respond to feedback it had gotten from its municipalities about timelines not necessarily coalescing for multi-phase projects or different types of grants to be able to cobble, to be cobbled together, et cetera. And so with this new initiative, they were announcing the timeline, which was submit a one stop for growth expression of interest between now and April 2nd. They'll give you feedback on five potential ideas. It doesn't necessarily have to be concrete ideas that are ready to go this year, but they will work with you to give you feedback about what you, what they, what they could advise of. Not even discreet to the 10 agenda or grants that they're proposing, but also in other agencies that they could point us to. So they basically were saying, partner with us, let's start a dialogue, let's figure out how we can help you help yourselves, all in the vein of economic development. So they basically were saying partner with us, let's start a dialogue, let's figure out how we can help you help yourselves, all in the vein of economic development. And so then, once you have, and you didn't even have to do the expression of interest. That was an option. After April 2nd, you can now, from April 2nd until the end of June, submit your grants that fall within this grant program. So I think it's a great idea for us to submit an expression of interest. I think it's important to document that we all agree that these are our five priorities, not just economic developments, not just, you know, whomever. And so we invited in, Eric and I had a call with Heather, with the DPW, with the treasurer, with the accountant, and of course, the town manager to review thoroughly, are these our five priorities? And these were plucked from the obvious already contending priorities that we keep talking about, right? So then it was almost just a matter of, yeah, these are probably all our priorities. Now, do we rank them? And so we all felt like globe village is a big priority, except we're not really sure if it's, if there's anything that we can see as a doable project in the next year. AO, having been rejected last year from Mass Works, and then we did a debrief with the state that told us how to improve the, the grant application. We feel like is an easy next, is, is, is still a priority. And then the other priorities, we tried to do a catch-all of our, you know, our infrastructure being our, the roads that we couldn't tuck into the bond, such as Gulfwood and Hamilton, and the remainder of Main Street. Then the facilities and the facilities, we tried to do the catch-all of, as you saw, the all-town buildings and.
Excuse me. Catherine, can you mute yourself just for a second? Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
So then the, the facilities, we tried to do the catch-all of town hall, fire station, and the curbside solution, just because we were trying to figure out how to get all five, excuse me, get all of our priorities into these five, you know, items. And then the last was the developing the rail trail. And so then you see, I started to build out the, the actual expression of interest language in there. And Eric filled out what was appropriate for the, you know, the housing development tools that we've completed. And, and we hope that we get some concrete feedback to then be able to come to you with what the state suggests for our potential grants for this year. What I'd suggest is probably going to be, they'll say that hopefully we go forward with the Mass Works again for the AO, and then I'm not sure what else.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? Councilor Steves?
Um, yeah, the one question that kind of jumps out at me, considering the fact that we had the issue with the Mass Works grant and, and the Innovation Center. Do you think that they might have an issue with the fact that that's privately owned, whereas everything else in here is public property?
Yeah, I don't know if you saw the language I used inside the application, but what Melissa feels strongly about is that in the initial agreement, they say it's a, I don't know how, what the language was. It was exclusive use, or it's some kind of binding agreement, but it's never explicitly stated as lease or as easement. And so Melissa Zawadzki said that in her experience, this needs to be an easement. And so I, I put within that expression of interest, most of the language I chose was easement. And so I'm hoping that then the next conversation is with the town manager and then potentially AO about whether we can get that as an easement, rather than any other squishy language.
Okay, thanks.
You. Any other questions? Curs? Councilor Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I was wondering if there was any way we could somehow fit brownfields in there because there are some areas in town that do need to be cleaned up, especially the DPW. If we're ever going to use the DPW for a transfer station, we're going to need to clean it up. So it would be nice if we could fit that in there somehow. I'm not, not sure where, but I'd like to see that somewhere in there. Thank you.
Yeah, we could write that right into that facilities and curbside solution as extra language.
Well, I mean, it's okay with all the other councils as well, but it's something that I would like to see in there. I, I know that Councilor Dan, Dave Adams and I were on the curb, and Councilor Steves were on the curbside collection. And, and one of the places we had mentioned using as a transfer station is DPW building. And it's, it's gonna, it definitely is going to have to be cleaned up. I have no idea where we're going to get the money for such a thing. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Just to pinpoint, I, you know, that's somewhere the town council wants to go possibly in the future for that project. Yeah, I do know it's taking a long time with that brownfield over there by the DPW to be, I think it's a, I don't know how many millions of dollars they put into that. But would that be something that they, is that something that Ms. Blakely brought up at all during you guys' discussion, DPW? Or does she have any say in this? Or any, any conversation with you guys?
Eric might know better. Eric, do you have any input? I haven't been privy to it.
To the best of my knowledge, no, we have not discussed the DPW as being utilized with this one-stop grant opportunity. I don't know if Heather has other thoughts on other brownfields grants that there might be out there, or you know, if there's federal programs or anything like that that she's aware of through EPA maybe. So I'm terribly sorry that I don't have a solid answer for you.
Okay. No, no problem. Appreciate that, Eric. Thank you so much. You know, I just, I just think because this talks about the curbside in here and infrastructure down the road, I thought maybe that may be something that she, she could have brought up. Because we did discuss this thoroughly about that area as well, for the curbside. Okay. I, I wouldn't have a problem with it at all. It'd be put in there at all. You know, I don't want to step on anybody's toes and interfere with anybody from that point on, but you know, I don't think it's a bad idea. Can't hurt. Okay. Anything else? All right. Votes. All those in favor? Catherine?
Yes.
DeeDee?
Yes.
Councilor Dow?
Yes.
Councilor Adams, yes. All right. And is it number seven, new business, anything? Councilor Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, just several, a couple of observations, some comments, and question, I guess, to the town manager. Whom is there a specific person within the town hall that updates the town website, or are the individual department heads responsible for updating the town website?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure exactly. I know Kanoier updates some. Most department heads, I believe, are responsible for theirs. Individual departments. Our office does a fair amount of updating of the calendar, the news, and a variety of other information. But if some people do not have the expertise, I know they contact our office and between us and Kanoier, it is updated. But if you may recall, when we were here last September, we are working, we received money through CARES Act to improve our website. So we would be having an overhaul and my plan would be at that point, it comes with training and we would get individual departments trained on how to update their pages. There's supposed to be tools that come with that to make it easier. So that's a goal and objective that I have in that when I came forward with that proposal to upgrade the website, that was one of the things I had in mind.
I thank you, Mr. Town Manager. If I can just continue, the reason why I ask that is prior to the meeting, I was taking a look at the town website. And when I looked specifically at the economic development and planning portion of the website, I still see Rosemary on there as the Economic Development Director and with her contact information. And then when I look at some commercial property inventory list, which is outdated, one in, one specifically, and there's spelling errors. We list a property at 29 Elm Street. Well, it should be 39 Elm Street. Commercial is misspelled, as are several other. But it's embarrassing when, when we're trying to attract business to town and we don't have the correct contact. Everything today is done on the web, as most of us know, and not paper, for the most of us, for most, most part. And I just think there are little things that should be, we shouldn't be overlooking the little things to help move this town forward as we attempt to attract new businesses into this town. Speaking of which, there, there are three new businesses that have moved into town fairly recently. I know one is the Lifeline Nutrition, the Alteration, and the Lux Realty Company. And I've had the opportunity to visit all three. I know Councilor Adams has been to at least one that I'm aware of, maybe all three. But maybe there can be a committee of some type or someone from town to greet these businesses, to say, hi, hello, how can we help you? You need anything else from us? Instead of always trying to, because what I've heard from all three businesses is they make it difficult. Our town makes it difficult to, for new businesses to want to come into this town. And that's shocking to hear from three local businesses. There were obstacles. I understand there's rules, there's laws, I get it. But let's be a little more friendly. When somebody calls the town hall and doesn't get back to somebody, instead of, you know, four or five days, in one case, it was nine days later. That's, that's not the way that we should be handling the town business, in my opinion. It's, it's, if we're, if we're going to be attracting business, like we say, let's be a little more business friendly. It's also, I know I'm skipping around a little bit, very disappointing to hear the planning board's decision, and I know you're working on that, Mr. Town Manager. Thank you. I appreciate you keeping us updated with the recent email, but very disappointing to turn down those funds right now, possibly come into this town for a business to open up on Main Street that has done everything that this town has asked of it to do. And yet we're saying, because of one vote, sorry.
Hey, Councilor Katrona, you know what we can do is, let me to cut you off real quick. I understand your frustration on that. But you know what I don't mind doing is I don't mind putting this on the agenda to discuss, i.e. the website and, and, you know, the greeting of these individuals and these companies as well. I would not have a problem whatsoever. If you send me an email, I will be more than willing, you know, I mean, I'd be more willing to discuss it and get it on the agenda so we can have a further in-depth discussion. I'd love that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, it would be beneficial if some of these things come to a head. If I get an email, I can work on it because I don't always get alerted to some of these things till we have these discussions. I can probably intervene and get, you know, a better resolution if I know when these things are happening in real time. So I, as always, welcome counselors to send me questions, comments, and I'll do my best to get on top of them.
Councilor Katrona, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Councilor Katrona, I'll, I'll send you an email. This is like a little reminder of things that you may have be frustrated with. And if any of the town counselors would like to do the same thing, by all means. That way we can kind of put them in a list and have just a quick conversation about it and maybe put some solutions to these things. Yeah, just to follow up. Go ahead, Councilor.
Just a quick follow-up. Thank you to the town manager. Thank you, Councilor Adams. They're just, I think it's a frustration that, that's just, it's, it's felt when, when you visit the businesses, these people are just trying to establish new businesses and, and it's just, you know, again, let's meet and greet, let's say hi, hello, rather than, rather than trying. Yeah, yeah.
Something like that from the town manager's office. Yeah.
Absolutely.
But so to my point earlier, if I don't know, if it doesn't, if people know that somebody's going into a private building, it doesn't come into the planning process or for a permit of any kind, then, then I don't know. So if somebody does know, just suggesting that they, they let me know in advance. We, we did things, you know, I was responsible as the assistant town manager when new businesses came to town, what would just call the town hall. But we would arrange that, that type of a meet and greet where we would invite the elected officials. We do ribbon cuttings that talk to Green Meadows about doing one of those because they opened quickly that weekend. And one of the things I think we really should be looking into going forward is developing an economic development committee. It's composed of citizens and elected officials that looks at ways to address these particular issues. I, I worked on one of those in a prior community. So I think they're all valid points and I think they're things that we can work together collaboratively, for the best interest of the community. But again, if there, if some of these issues fall on deaf ears, I would just ask somebody to pick up the phone and give me a shout and I'll make sure to pick it up and run with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to make note for Councilor Marketti, there's an economic committee that we do have in town. I don't know if it's filled, empty. Also, all right, Councilor Marketti, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I did attend that planning board meeting the other night, and I was a little disappointed at their vote that was taken on that. And, you know, you had, first of all, we have one member missing from that board, and then we had another member who abstained. And I'm not quite sure why she had to abstain. But, you know, when you think of, when I think about it, it's actually, by abstaining, it's really a no vote. Because she had voted yes, then, well, I know, Councilor Steves, I understand, Councilor Steves, I'm just shaking his head anyway. It would have been better if she had voted yes, because I know she supports it. That would have showed that she was not biased towards this, this business. I understand what they're saying. She worked for another.
I completely, I'm with you with the frustration on that thing. I would just say this, is there any new business?
Well, this is new business because what I don't understand is they changed a two-thirds vote requirement to a unanimous vote requirement. And so I want to know what can be done about this going forward. Probably we need to add a member to that board. But also if this can be gone to the zoning board of appeal, or if can't do that, then if something like a rule of necessity could be used or something. Because to me, this, that changed the whole scope of the vote. It went from a two-thirds to a unanimous. And to me, that didn't make sense to me. So.
And I know everybody's frustrated with this. I'm going to, like, we're trying to do new business. You know, I don't want to, you got it. And I think there's a lot of us very frustrated with the whole situation and how it handled it and why somebody accused himself and adding an extra person. Hopefully there will be one soon. But I can't, we can't, you know, now we're starting about discussion on everything under the sun here, so on this matter. And I think that's where we're, we're stepping over our line. And I, again, I'll put it on there and we'll have a discussion about it. So I'll, I'll email both Councilor Katrona and Councilor Marketti on any, anything, and then we can, we can work it from that point on at the same time. So if there's anything besides having the discussion.
I, I think Mr. Rumsby was going to give a point of information on how the, the voting works in the two-thirds requirement.
Very passionate 11 in here. So go ahead, Mr. Rumsby.
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Chair. So to answer Councilor Marketti's question as to why we had a member recuse herself. She is currently employed by Green Meadows and any votes on, you know, positive or negative on a, another cannabis or marijuana establishment could be considered a violation of the ethics code. So she has recused herself from every application with the exception of the Green Meadows because her employment happened after the Green Meadows project was approved.
Thank you, Mr. Rumsby, for that clarification. More point of information. Councilor Dow and then Councilor Steves? It's all the same item? Don't even bring it up. Anybody else? Thank you.
I have to say one thing, Mr. Chair, are you going to allow me? I think the planning board doing good job and is a reason why Mr. Sennelly, I think he vote no. But why the planning board going too far with it? They need to say no at the first meeting or second, not go two, three meeting, cause that gentleman.
Councilor Dow, we have our own opinions. And I appreciate it so much, and I know you're passionate about it. We've had this conversation. We've had this conversation. Thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Counselor Dow? Very well. Counselor, Counselor Steve, if you're talking about, you're good now? All right. Thank you for the insightful conversation. I appreciate it. Anything else? Very well. Number eight, motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Any second? Do you have a second?
I can, second.
Okay.
I thought we weren't going to adjourn there for a minute.
I know, but like, well. All right, somehow another electricity will go out on my side. All right, all those in favor? Catherine?
Yes.
DeeDee?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yeah.
Counselor Adams? Yes, holy cow. All right. One now, guys.